All right, welcome to the public forum for candidates for Monroe County Commissioners, Districts 2 and 3. I am your moderator, Maria Douglas. My for-pay job is with Middleway House, and my -- a couple of my not-for-pay jobs are with Hoosier Asian American Power, a nonpartisan Asian American Women’s Advocacy Group, and I’m also a member of the nonpartisan Monroe County Women’s Commission as well. This forum is hosted by the League of Women Voters of Bloomington, Monroe County, and we’re so pleased to have the sponsors, the following sponsors: Big Ten Voting Challenge, the Greater Chamber -- I always say that, the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, IU Political and Civic Engagement, Monroe County National Organization of Women, South Central Indiana Citizens Climate Lobby, and the NAACP, the Bloomington branch. And I want to thank CATS for recording the event for prosperity and review. And I want to take a moment to review the ground rules, which all the candidates have accepted. So each candidate will make a one-minute opening statement, and then the candidates -- then questions will be asked, and candidates will respond in turn to questions posed by the moderator, rotating which candidate answers first. So right now, we’re going to do 90-second responses unless I specify differently. And I do want to make note that Mr. Steve Volin’s card is only handwritten because we had a little typo in it, and so we just wanted to make sure that -- I mean, he is a special person, as is everybody, but it’s no trickery or anything like that. Okay. So, audience members, please submit questions on cards.
Yeah, just raise your hand if you want to.
And the card will be brought to you and then collected, and as moderator, I will choose which questions to ask. And each candidate will be asked to make a closing statement, which will be one minute, and everyone has agreed to civil discourse, so try to keep it under control. And I do want to say, just so we can give the candidates, you know, the utmost time to answer your questions, I know we love to root for our home teams, but let’s try to keep applause or responses to ourselves until maybe the end, so they can have enough time to answer. So, all right, we will start with opening comments, and actually, we’re going to start left to right for the audience. So we’re going to start with Peter from District 2 first.
Great, thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you to the sponsors. It’s so good to see the sponsoring organizations here: National Organization of Women, AKA Big Ten Voting Challenge, PACE, the NAACP, and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much. My name is Peter Iverson. I’m running to represent you and the Board of Commissioners for all of Monroe County. I spent the last five years representing you on the county council, where I’ve done a lot of really great things, and I’m excited to talk to you about those. My wife and I are raising our two daughters here in Monroe County. We’re very proudly sending them to MCCSE because we believe that public schools are important, and I’m very happy that we are here to join you today. My campaign has a plan for the future. If you go to peteriverson.org, you can see that I have indeed a 10-point plan for housing specific to Monroe County, as well as plans for numerous other issues that I have heard all across Monroe County. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I’m Julie Thomas. I am running for reelection in District 2 for Monroe County Commissioner. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, NAACP Now, PACE, everyone who helped make this happen. It is an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of Monroe County. Since 2013, I’m focused on innovation, which relies on extensive collaboration, environmental stewardship, and engaging with our residents. I’m tested, trusted, and I have demonstrated my commitment to Monroe County and the people of Monroe County. Thank you.
Go ahead, Penny.
Good afternoon. I’m Monroe County Commissioner Penny Githens. I want to thank the League and all the other sponsors for arranging today’s forum. I’ve been a commissioner for five years. I’m running for reelection because I care. I care about our drinking water, those with mental illness and substance use disorders, childcare availability, homelessness, low- and moderate-income residents whose homes need repairs, and ensuring our residents have food, water, and transportation, and more. Being a commissioner is a full-time job for me, one that is difficult to train for, so I want to tell you about my background. I have a BS from Purdue and an MS from IU. I have held faculty research positions at both the Yale School of Medicine and Vanderbilt University. I’ve done program development at the Wharton School of Business and been a project manager at IU. I’m the co-author of two books and multiple professional journal articles. My husband and I moved back to Bloomington over 30 years ago because this is where we wanted to raise our sons, a decision we have never regretted.
Julie?
Good afternoon. It’s my honor and privilege to be here today. Thank all of you for coming. Thank you for hosting this forum. Monroe County is currently stuck. It’s been stuck for years. We’ve been stuck with a convention center that isn’t. We’ve been stuck with an unconstitutional jail. We’ve been stuck with an urgent housing need. We’ve been stuck with contentious relations between city and county. Well, I know how we get unstuck, and that’s through strong, knowledgeable, competent commissioners who act with urgency and with expertise. The current commissioners have portrayed their candidacy as a fight in campaign ads, a fight for residents, a fight against the city, a fight for certain stances. I prefer to focus instead on collaboration. We need mutual respect for other county offices, viewing them as co-equal branches of government. I’m that candidate. I have the business acumen, and as a JD PhD from University of Pennsylvania, who served for 17 years on the faculty of IU, I have the legal knowledge to get things done. But most important, for the past 20 years, I’ve listened to how law affects people’s lives and how it can change the law to make things more positive.
Steve?
The commissioners have built a moat around Monroe County housing opportunities. They’re making housing impossible to build and pulling up the drawbridge of affordability from renters, first-time homebuyers, and anyone who wants to move yet stay in the community. They’ve had no plan to solve the interminable, festering human rights violation that is the county jail, except to move it out of the city, an action whose costs they continually underestimate. They pick fights with everyone, most of all with the entity that they should consider their crown jewel, the city of Bloomington. Their fighting, simply put, has raised the cost of living here and squandered the tax dollars of city and non-city residents alike. If Monroe County is one community, if it is our community, it must plan for the change and growth that our desirable community generates. It must work in common purpose across jurisdictions. I ask you to vote for a change in county leadership on May 7. I’m Steve Volin, last on your ballot, first in your hearts.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with Julie, and then again, the responses are 90 seconds. I failed to mention that we have timekeepers down here. You will be down to your right. You will be alerted at the 30-second mark and then the stop time. So I’m just going to go for it, since I have the mic right now. Please get your questions in, if you have things that you would like to ask. Since Asian Americans are the fastest-growing voter population, what are your plans to engage them and then serve them? Julie?
I think that is a great question, and I think it is one that highlights the importance of embracing our diverse Monroe County population. And I would really like to see us expand our celebrations and to expand our work in the community as well. And part of that comes from listening and learning and inviting people in, and that’s one thing I’ve been working on very hard. I’ve been part of the Monroe County Health Equity Council since it started, and that is a group that is focused on ensuring that underrepresented, unheard voices are heard relating to public health, but also in our community in general, and connecting policymakers and decision-makers with the community. And we do need to have Asian American voices as part of that process, and I look forward to expanding the work of the Health Equity Council in the future.
Thank you. Penny?
Thank you. I think we ought to be looking to ensure that a lot of our documents are translated into languages that make it accessible to everyone in our community. We do try to do things in Spanish, but I think that we ought to be reaching out to folks and saying, “What else would you like to see? What else do we need to do to invite people in and to make sure that you feel like you’re part of our community?” We’re also looking to do things like bring in the National Alliance for Mental Illness to help us figure out where we have gaps for treatment for people, and that means for all people throughout our community. And we would -- I would welcome input from everyone, including people from the Asian American community, to tell us what else they feel that we need to be doing on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, first, I would do with every community group, and I think we need to engage all voices in the community. Every community group has unique needs, and those needs need unique solutions. So I would listen, I would engage, and we could transform things together. In this county, we’re also blessed with a number of elected officials of color. And again, I think we need to start with a basic expectation: we listen to them and we respect their opinions. But so far, these elected officials and other people of color have not been given the room to speak. They’ve been silenced when they challenged the status quo, they’ve been interrupted, they’ve been canceled, witnessed the CJRC, and they’ve told us what needs to change. But we need to listen to them and respect that opinion. Too often, our elected officials have relied on platitudes. Instead, we need to demonstrate change, not just to say things and listen, but to do things. Listen, learn, do better. We need to address this issue head-on. We need to learn how we can not only be advocates, but be allies, and that starts with a series of community conversations that are open and transparent and collegial.
I met the woman who was attacked on the bus a year ago, the young Asian American woman. I was speaking at City Hall, and she was part of the group that was there, and I learned -- listened to her, and I learned a lot from her. I think that we have to consider that the so-called Asian American community is not the same, say, as the community that inspired the city’s Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. For example, they don’t necessarily speak one or two languages; they speak dozens of them. And so they have different needs and different concerns. But one way to listen to them is to do what Bloomington and, to some extent, Monroe County has done over the decades, and that’s form a commission. Commissions are good for listening. My colleague Isabel Piedmont Smith created the Community Advisory for Public Safety Commission, and it’s been an important step in addressing public safety. I created the Parking Commission in 2016, which was famously vetoed by Mayor Hamilton and overridden 9-0, and I’ve served on that commission and other ones, and I know what it’s like. I think it’s important to create perhaps a joint city-county Asian Affairs Commission that would go with other commissions like Hispanic and Latino Affairs, Status of Black Males, Status of Children and Youth, Status of Women. I think it’s important to listen to them, and that is one way of formalizing that listening.
Thank you. Peter?
Well, thank you, Maria, for that wonderful question. And as the county executive, it is very important that the Board of Commissioners leads our community. Racism and acts of violence have no place in our community, full stop. My plan for this community involves wealth creation and income building. Both of those impact directly the Asian American communities that choose to live here. And my fear is that if we don’t reverse course, if we don’t have a change in the Board of Commissioners in terms of housing, that we will continue to see members of the Asian American community leave Monroe County because they are experiencing the same thing that other members of the community are. There is simply not enough housing for people to live here that want to live here. We know that in 2021, the Board of Commissioners voted three times unanimously against more housing, and that if you go to peteriverson.org, I’m the only candidate with a 10-point housing plan that is specific to Monroe County. We know that housing is one of the biggest investments that anyone will make in this community, and that builds wealth. That is one of the direct ways that we can serve all residents of Monroe County, and we can continue to work with our economic development partners to bring in businesses for increased income.
Thank you very much. This next one is an audience question, and we will start with Penny. What have you learned about jail design and location from conversations with Sheriff Marte?
Well, we’ve had multiple conversations about this, and we actually went through three-day training sponsored by the National Criminal Institute on planning of new facilities, and Sheriff Marte sat at my group, and so we’ve had extensive conversations, or I have personally had with him. He -- at the most recent discussions that we’ve had, he is in favor of the North Park location that we’ve been looking at. He is in favor of, and I am as well, of a single-story facility. He is in favor, as am I, of co-locating all of our services for the justice sort of complex that we need to have out there. That increases safety for everybody. We also are talking -- he is in favor of the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program that I am in the lead on and trying to bring to our community. This is a program that works with those who have mental illness and substance use disorders inside of our jail. These are -- the work is done by certified peer recovery coaches, and then there -- as someone exits the jail, they are then handed off to another certified peer recovery coach who works with them very intensely for at least the first 28 days after their release. So I think that I am in agreement with Sheriff Marte. We have -- we had tried to have a facility down on Fullerton Pike. My opponent, Mr. Volin, voted against having that there. Thank you.
I learned a number of things from Sheriff Ruben Marte when I actually toured the jail two weeks ago, when I’ve had extended conversations with him about the jail, because as a law professor, this is something that touches deeply at my heart, and I know it’s deeply at the hearts of our community members as well. For 15 years, Monroe has been under the shadow of an ACLU lawsuit alleging unconstitutional conditions. And so I’ve learned, when I spoke with Sheriff Ruben Marte, that Monroe County Commissioners didn’t listen. When he represented a need to clean the jail to avoid MRSA, the Commissioner said that those needs were just aesthetic, despite the fact that several of these areas were areas in which inmates walked barefoot, despite the fact that people come in without shoes, in many cases without clothing, and that’s for their personal protection. It was aesthetic. So Sheriff Ruben Marte borrowed the equipment we needed to clean the facility from another county. We need a justice center as close as possible to the downtown, co-located with prosecutor and public defender offices, recovery and mental health services, and new technologically updated courtrooms, amply served by public transit. Meanwhile, we have to maintain the current jail, which is an abysmal mess. It’s facing problems that are serious, not aesthetic, that pose everyday risks to the safety of employees and individuals who are incarcerated, non-working elevator. We have sewage flowing into administrative offices; we have leaks in the roofs. I’m eager to work with Sheriff Marte and his staff on-site, design and programming, including preventative and post-incarceration wraparound programs. And most importantly, I look forward to respecting Sheriff Marte as a co-equal branch of government.
Thank you, Steve.
The commissioners dithered for years on the issue of the convention center driving up costs. Whenever we could have done with that tax money in 2019 was lost in the bickering between them and the mayor. They’re equally to blame for our reduced opportunities. The commissioners dithered for years just as well on the issue of the jail, fully aware of the ACLU lawsuit, of the miserable conditions therein. They’ve had no strategy for working with the city to solve the problem downtown, and so they’ve thrown out all sorts of poorly-vetted ideas to build it anywhere but downtown. Yes, I voted against Fullerton Pike, along with all eight of my other colleagues. It was unanimously rejected because it was a bad idea, just like North Park is a bad idea, moving it all the way out of town, eviscerating the center of Bloomington. They want to throw away the land and infrastructure investments they have, including the $9 million parking garage they built only seven years ago because of their inability to build in a city and their spiteful attitude towards working with their own county seat. They founded Bloomington as the county seat 200 years ago, and now they want to hollow out its center. Their dithering and spite has driven up costs even worse than with the convention center. As far as the mental health facility -- as far as Sheriff Marte goes, I asked him about the idea of maybe repurposing showers west as a mental health facility. He said the problem with that would be, “We could start referring people to that instead of a jail, but so could every other jurisdiction in the state. We have no ability to control the use of that building for mental health, so it’s a problem that we all will continue to struggle with.” But at least he had a useful answer for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Well, thank you for this question. Sheriff Marte and I have a very positive working relationship. We’ve worked together closely for his term as sheriff of our county. I trust his judgment, and I’ve been happy to work with him. Unfortunately, the stagnation by the county commissioners that has been talked about is very accurate. We have not been able to do a lot with Sheriff Marte and his vision for the community because of the roadblocks that the current county commissioners have put up. I want you to contrast that with the actions that I took on the Justice Fiscal Advisory Commission, where I ensured that Sheriff Marte was on that body as we discussed design options for our new facility. In particular, we learned the following things from Sheriff Marte as we went on jail tours and in conversations with him. Number one, we need to be able to plan for the future. We do not want to be overcrowded again. We need to build a facility that then can expand or shrink based upon the current needs of the community. Number two, we need to be very mindful of staffing. It’s going to be our highest cost in this new facility. How many correctional officers are we going to need in the new facility? We don’t know that yet because there’s no design from the commissioners. Third, the transition team is vitally important. I’ve been in favor of funding this team when I was at the pony training that Commissioner Githens talked about. That was a big issue.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. So the transition team has been funded, the transition team is getting hired, and we are doing our due diligence and working on a site selection. And that includes getting appraisals and getting geotechnical surveys done of the land. Where can we build it? We have looked at multiple sites: Hopewell, downtown, no room downtown at our current properties, Fullerton Pike, the Thompson property, which would take more than two years and more than $1 million to prepare the property. And all of these things mean time, and -- but that would be another huge amount of time that has a human cost to it. Now, we love working with Sheriff Marte. They come and they provide updates at our Wednesday meetings. We thank each other. Initial issues regarding cleaning the jail and those kinds of things, they were just asking us for money. That’s not our job; that is the job of the council. We have been supporting every single remodel, and we have helped all along the way. We have an excellent staff. They are working together very well. And so we continue to build on a great relationship, and I’ve been in the jail recently, and we’ve toured a number of facilities across the state and across the country to see ways to do this better. We agree. We need programming. We need to prevent recidivism. We want to reduce the number of people who go back into the criminal justice system, and that needs space. North Park is a great space to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, we’ll start this next question with Jody. Since this was brought up in the previous responses, what are your thoughts on the IRACs proposal brought forth a couple weeks ago at the NatU Hill Room by Commissioner Githens?
Well, I think it’s wonderful. I’m an expert on substance use and mental health, and in every successful community that has fought these issues and made some inroads against them, wraparound programs are incredibly important. Transition programs are incredibly important, and we cannot just release people from jail, give them some clothing on their backs, and hope that they will be successes. We cannot meet that need in our community. In fact, I don’t think that this is a done deal. We need to be chosen as a pilot site for this community, and we need to have plans in case we are not chosen as a pilot site for this community. These are things that we believe -- I believe we are already doing in some capacity, but not enough, and it depends on connecting people to services, making resources available and transparent to people as they come out of facilities. And again, we could be doing a lot of these things just on a local level ourselves, even if we are not chosen as a pilot selection site, but again, wraparound services are essential and needed. And not just actually from the jail, but also from the hospital as well.
Thank you. Steve?
North Park, again, is the same problem as Fullerton Pike. It’s in the middle of nowhere. There’s literally nothing there. A whole new community has to crop up around it, and it’s not going to grow like Bloomington’s downtown grew. It’s going to be suburban sprawl at best, and it’ll be devoid of services at worst. There’s a reason that the city council voted 9-0 to reject Fullerton Pike. It was completely undeveloped land on the very edge of the city, and one of the problems that people have when they leave jail or try to enter into any kind of program is transit they need to get around. So it’s great to be providing the service, but where it’s provided matters. I authored the ordinance that allowed Bloomington Transit to provide service outside the city last August. The commissioners have yet to even pick up the phone and call anybody at Bloomington Transit or the transition committee that was ready to talk turkey with them about how to start providing service outside the city. If they really are going to provide transit to this new place at North Park, how come they’re not -- I mean, there’s a golden opportunity to provide transit to the county that’s been in demand for years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Peter?
Oh, I thought I was just wound up, and I was really going. All right. So, you know, like, it really matters where it is, and I do firmly believe that the commissioners have the land downtown that they need to stay downtown. It requires building up, even though the jail itself should be on one floor. Maybe if you put the other things on top of it, we just start with building this jail with cells on the ground floor and then putting offices on top would be something that might forestall federal intervention in the justice system.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. Peter?
IRACs is a program that’s run by the state, and it’s all about reentry. How do we ensure that individuals who are incarcerated or were once incarcerated can reenter our community in a way that is restorative instead of punitive? It’s a good program. I’m in favor of it, and I think that anything we can do to ensure that reentry is as seamless as possible involving our community service organizations in the process is good. IRACs does just that. A recovery community organization, or RCO, is needed to ensure this program exists, and New Leaf New Life is one of the organizations that has expressed interest in becoming that organization. They do a lot of really good work in the community, and they’re poised to go into the jail to work directly with our correctional officers. How do I know this? I know this because I’m president of the Substance Use Disorder Advisory Commission. I am overseeing a lot of the work that we’re doing in terms of substance use. I’m also the fiscal agent on the opioid settlement dollars that have come into our community. That way, we can appropriate those dollars and invest them in issues that are of importance to all of you, such as reentry. How do we make sure that when an individual is released from jail by the Board of Judges, they’re not just let out in an alley or in a field or wherever, and instead, we ensure that there’s a warm handoff so they get the services that they need so that they can have an opportunity to really thrive in our community and not be part of the revolving door going back into jail?
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you so much. This is a great question, and it really highlights some of the things that are so important to us and the things that we’ve been looking at as we’ve toured facilities across the country, and that is mental health and substance use disorder, which occupies -- that issue is so prevalent in our jail, it is a vast majority of inmates have mental health, substance use disorder issues. Let’s tackle this, right? And IRACs is wonderful because we can start now. We don’t have to wait for a new facility. That means the sheriff is willing and able to provide the programmatic space they need. Yes, great partner, New Leaf New Life. They will be a great partner. If they can’t do it, someone else will. We need to ensure we have supportive housing. We also need to ensure that we are providing mental health and substance use disorder treatment to prevent people from entering into the criminal justice system in the first place. But Commissioner Githens has done an amazing job in getting the forward momentum on bringing IRACs into our community and into our jail now, as soon as possible. And we appreciate and applaud the work of Jail Commander Githens and the sheriff, and of course, Commissioner Githens, and the folks at the state who are going to help us make this happen. But we have other gaps we have to fill. This is one brick in the wall, and we have many other problems to tackle. Thank you.
This is one of those situations where experience as a commissioner really does make a difference. I do want to say something about what Mr. Volin said. He didn’t really, I don’t feel like, answered the question about IRACs, but what we’ve been told by our jail designer is that we need at least 25 acres if we’re going to have the single-story jail, the sheriff’s office, and co-locate the justice campus sort of thing. But when I first heard about the -- But when I first heard about the IRACs program, I contacted the sort of state leader of this, Jamie Whitaker. And Jamie said, "Well, I'm going to be speaking at a state sort of program in a week or so." And so, I said immediately, "When and where? I'll be there." So, I drove up to Indianapolis, watched his program, and then spoke with him afterwards. I brought him down to Bloomington. I brought him down to Bloomington more than once, in fact. And we've talked about how that might work. I've met with people from New Leaf New Life multiple times. I've put them in connection with Heather Rodriguez, who is the person who oversees the peer recovery coaches and certifies the recovery community organizations that we would need to have in place to do this. This is a very unique kind of program because not only are these peers people who are in recovery, these are peers who have also been involved in the justice system. And in most situations, those kinds of individuals are not allowed back into the jail, but they have to go through not only the specific peer recovery kind of programming, but they have to go through IRACs training. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie? Oh, did you already answer?
Yeah, I already did.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
We started with you. Okay. Okay. No, no. Thank you so much. Okay, so, I'm going to, we're going to start with Steve where we're going to transition topics a little bit. So, get ready. Okay. So, what will you do to mitigate climate change impacts in Monroe County? And how will you do that while balancing the need for more housing?
The commissioners claim they're stewards of the environment because they install solar panels and fight clearcutting near Lake Monroe. They're addressing the moats in the community's eye when the actual great big log in our eye is their attitude towards sprawl. They're exacerbating it with larger land requirements for new housing and rejecting anything other than single-family housing, which is the type of housing that has the most expensive carbon footprint in both land use and transportation demand. Don't tell me that you're saving the environment when you're only increasing the demand for trips by car and not looking for ways to decrease car trips. In an era of climate change in a community that is growing and always has grown, it's utterly irresponsible of county leadership to not plan for new housing construction, to plan for denser housing construction, to plan for transit-oriented development. We can reduce the average impact of existing residents through building much more compactly for new residents. Two years ago, I won a permanent 40% increase in funding for Bloomington Transit. And again, I authored the ordinance that opened it up to the whole city in August. Again, it's eight months later and they have yet to even open discussions with BT, let alone actually signing a contract to make transit available to county residents. I'm serious about meeting the community's climate goals. The current commissioners are simply not.
Well, thank you for this question. This is clearly something that I feel very passionately about and it's a two-part question. I'll address the first part first. Climate action in the county. I am very proud that we are the first county in Indiana to be able to work with the Environmental Resilience Institute. We are the first county in Indiana to have a climate resilience plan. And we're the first county in Indiana to have a McKinney Climate Fellow to be able to do the work on this. And I've been very fortunate to be able to supervise these very talented students in Monroe County. We are moving forward. We have an amazing draft plan ready to go. We have an implementation matrix ready to go. I'm the only person on this stage today that not only sits on the Monroe County Environmental Commission, but also sits on the Blue Ribbon Commission on Climate Resiliency. This is a very important topic to me and we've gotten a lot done. The second part of this question is about housing. How do you balance the fact that we're in a housing crisis and we need more housing with the climate? I don't think this is an either-or question. I think that our community is talented enough and smart enough to do both. I think that we can build more housing for the residents that want to move here and at the same time protect our wetlands. I think that we can build more houses and at the same time ensure that we're not building in our growing flood plains as the science is telling us that's happening. I think that we can go ahead and build more housing in the county and not put it on top of karst features.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, this is a great question and it is indeed multifaceted. And solar panels do matter because once we have that project done, it includes plug-ins and battery backup. We'll be changing our fleet over to plug-in and plug-in hybrid. That's going to help everyone in terms of the taxpayers. It will save money and it will help our environment. But preventing the clearcutting and the dropping of glyphosate poison onto the land adjoining Lake Monroe is a huge battle. And we're really proud to lead the fight against the National Forest Service to get them to stop this plan because if we don't have clean drinking water, we don't have anything. I will note, there's a lot related to housing that has been brought up. You know, we might want to say, "Well, we want to have denser housing," but that requires a package plant, which has its own requirements. Or you have to build with one-acre lots because that is the state requirement for septic. If you don't like the one-acre density, okay. We can ask for a connection to a sewer. However, in our most recent housing endeavor, a collaboration with Habitat for Humanity, we have now been told by the city that we cannot have access to city sewer. So, we have a lot of work to do to figure out if it's a capacity issue and what we can do to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a difficult question and it's going to be difficult to address, especially not just for today, but for ongoing generations. I am not in favor of sprawl. And for years, I've been talking about the fact that I believe that the kind of zoning that exists within the city of Bloomington should be changed. We shouldn't have just duplexes allowed in specific little spots. We should be looking at townhomes. We should be looking at saying, "If we have a 20-acre spot where we can build, let's build 10 acres very, very densely." And this is an item that Commissioner Thomas has championed. And let's have 10 acres that we can have for gardens, for enjoying nature, for doing the kinds of things that really relax people and maintain calmness, things like that. But we have, we received a request for rezone recently out at Fieldstone. And the request was to lessen density. And we voted no on that. But that could move forward if they could get the sewer hookup that right now the city of Bloomington Utilities is denying them. There were 3,000 new apartments that came online in 2023. I don't know if people are aware of that. But we also anticipate that there'll be, I think it was 4,250 new units at Sudbury and between 1,000 and 1,500 units at Hopewell. Again, those are going to place big demands on our sewer system. And that may put real, real pressure on anything else we do. We are looking at package plants in other areas outside the city of Bloomington.
This is a really great question. Thanks for asking this. So, we know that low-density housing has concerning environmental impacts, especially when it expands into forests, especially when it is on the periphery of publicly protected lands. These low-density developments just serve to extend the environmental impacts of each house over a larger area. We know what the commissioners say about dense housing, the type of housing that is needed for multiple populations. And it's funny to hear that we needed townhomes because they said no to a townhome development just a few years ago on the grounds that it was too dense and that people wouldn't want to live there. It was aesthetic. It was reported in the HT. So, we need to reframe this conversation. It's not about either development or environmental protection. It's not about either sprawl or non-development. It's about finding that housing that the missing middle, one of the county commissioner candidate, county council candidates from last presentation referred to, that those individuals want. And again, coming back to that low-density housing, that's what we're shackled to by county development ordinance that requires a minimum of one acre for new homes. And it's time to talk in terms of sewer, not septic. Those requirements are also increasingly inequitable and unaffordable. We're staring down proposed revisions to the CDO, County Development Ordinance, that would make things even worse. Downzoning 9,300 acres from residential to rural, requiring new homes to sit on 2.5 acres. Again, that is worse for climate change.
Thank you so much. This will be a follow-on question, so we're just going to do one minute. And we'll start with Peter. And this is a question from the audience that said, "Should the county encourage rental housing? And if so, how should a bill, it being habitable, be insured?"
This is a great question. Again, this is a two-part question. Let me address the housing section first. When I'm knocking doors, and we've talked to thousands of residents, whether it's phone calls or door knocking, what the residents are saying is, "We need more housing, Peter. We need more housing." And I say, "Yes, I'm all for that." If you go to peteriverson.org, you can see my plan. And initially, people think that just means these huge apartment complexes that are popping up on the east side of Monroe County. And what we're talking about here is that housing is on a spectrum. We have some housing experts here in the audience today that understand that folks don't want the government to tell them where to live. They want the government to reduce barriers so they can choose where to live based upon their lifestyle. And that really, I think, is the heart of what this question is asking in terms of, do we need more rental space? Yes, we need more rental space, but we also need more multifamily homes. We also need more single-family homes. The second part of the question, that's okay. Wow, I get passionate about these topics, you know?
Yeah. Okay, so, I will say first of all, please, let's break a myth right now. The 9,300 acres were not moved from residential to something else. These were already zoned at 2.5 acres and 5 acres. They were just moved to a new column called Rural under Residential. They're still residential as they always have been. Some lots were changed because of new flood maps. We have not completed the county development ordinance yet, so there isn't one. We have planning and zoning regulations in the old-school way. Yes, we do need rentals. I'm not going to mock somebody who wants to live on an acre or two, nor somebody who wants to live in a townhome. But we do have to provide better opportunities for rental. This issue was raised in terms of protecting renters. And I'm already working with our health board to come up with regulations that our judges can enforce when they have to deal with these housing issues. So, we're already moving forward, but we don't want to recreate a huge bureaucracy like Han because we don't need something that large. So, we're going for the middle ground first.
I also want to break a myth that's going on about the CDO that we have going. Some of the acreage that we have is being zoned for as little as .14 acres per lot for housing. And that makes a difference, too. But yes, we do need to ensure habitability. And one of those things that occurs out in the county especially is that a lot of the homes are on septic. And our health board has been going out, making septic, providing sort of reviews of the septic system, I'll say, and enforcing problems when it occurs. And if you're building out in the county and on septic, that's one of the inspections that has to occur as part of your building as well from the get-go. So, we need to make sure that those things are happening. And they are. So, we need to figure out a way, I think, though, for complaints to come in, for us to review those and see if we have departments that are already in place that make a difference there.
I do believe we need to increase rentals, but rentals are also a short-term solution to a long-term problem, which is affordable housing. We need programs that are going to transition individuals to homeownership. We need more rental space of a different type, built by community developers, not by REITs or real estate investment trusts from out of state. Those are the parties that came in and built the student housing that we can't seem to fill. We need to make our developers community partners in helping us solve the housing crisis. And we need to build in protections for renters. Bloomington already has a lot of protections for landlords. I'm proud to have served on the Community Justice and Mediation Center's Board of Directors for over 15 years. And we have a landlord-tenant mediation program. I participated in myself and I've mediated cases for free. And I think that when you have difficult solutions, you need community solutions to those problems. And that group is an excellent provider of those solutions.
We need more housing, period. We need a glut of housing to bring prices and rents down. The commissioners know the problems of septic. They know it's an environmental problem. Sewers are the answer and it's not a capacity issue. Because annexation is tied up in litigation, CBU is no longer extending sewer services to anyone outside the service area because they don't know whether a sewer waiver will ever be honored again. You saw what happened in 2017 and they were cheering it on the whole time. The demand for new housing in Monroe County, the commissioners are abetting anti-annexation activists. They are the cause of CBU's limiting of service. We could spread the property tax burden among more homes that would reduce the rate for existing owners if only we could build more homes, but they need to be on sewer. And that means the county needs to sit down with the city and figure out a way that they can live with whatever the city does regardless of annexation. Taxes are going to go up whether annexation is accepted or not. Sorry, I'm a little upset.
Thank you so much. We'll start this next question response with Julie. And this is three questions, asked the same question, or people asked the same question. How do you and how will you connect with residents?
Is this a minute thirty?
We'll do the 90 seconds, yes.
Thank you. It is a big question. And I have worked with so many amazing people throughout the years and I have met so many amazing people throughout the years. It's not just an election year, let's go knock on doors, although I do that as well. But it is the fact that when we funded Hoosier Hills Food Bank, we went out and we volunteered there and we put food in people's trunks through a hot, hot summer and then into the fall. And we also did the same for Pantry 279. It's not about just making a survey or doing a poll. It is about meeting people where they are. You meet people at Hoosier Hills Food Bank who are retired veterans who can't afford food for their household. Grandparents who are struggling to care for a grandchild they're suddenly responsible for. Single parents with children who can't make ends meet. That's where you meet folks. I've been an on-scene advocate for Middleway House for about 20 years before COVID and then I didn't do that anymore. But I've been on the boards at Planned Parenthood. I walked patients into the clinic on Thursday mornings. That's where the real people are. And it's about listening to people. It's what we're doing with the county development ordinance process. It's what we do when we hear any planning petition. Let's make that petition better for the neighbors who already own property in the area. And we worked with our trustees to make sure that we're funding the right things for the residents.
At the beginning of COVID, I got a call from, I believe it was Commissioner Thomas, who said, "Can we provide $25,000 in funding to United Way?" And I immediately said, "I'm in favor of that, but I also want to make sure that we provide $25,000 to the Hoosier Hills Food Bank." And that was not the start of my relationship with Hoosier Hills Food Bank, but it certainly increased what I was willing to do. And so, for the last four years, as they've done their food distributions and also their book sales, I've been volunteering. I've been out there putting food in people's, the back of people's cars, meeting people where they are, also supporting Pantry 279, including their food distribution at Thanksgiving. This past year, I went before county council and Board of Commissioners to say, "Could we use some of the ARPA money to make sure that people are fed at Thanksgiving?" Over 2,000 families were fed at Thanksgiving as a result of my efforts. And I also helped to deliver some of those meals to people who did not have the transportation. When people, when people were first moved out of Seminary Park, I personally went down and talked to folks who were there. So, I have talked with our homeless population. I do work with the Indiana Recovery Alliance. For 25 years, I've been a special education advocate for families with special ed students. We hold virtual office hours every week, or not every week, I do it twice a month. We listen to the families who come before us when there are rezones. When I get a request for a rezone or an appeal for a driveway, or I go out to those locations.
I'll answer this question by starting from the premise that we've got a collaboration crisis between the city and the county and between county offices themselves. This prevents us as a county from moving forward. It's delayed critical infrastructures like the jail, like the convention center. And it also hamstrings our efforts to deal with emergency issues such as homelessness and access to health services that again, demand close collaboration. It creates cynicism and burnout among residents and among elected officials. It's time to respect other government officials like the sheriff and the county clerk as co-equal. It's time to seek input from diverse voices and engage in evidence-based decision-making. I would connect by being present, being an active listener, maybe changing the meetings from 10:00 a.m. on a Wednesday to a time when people who live in the community and have working jobs can actually attend them or holding additional meetings to hear resident concerns after working hours. Also, I spent my research career listening to how law affects people's lives. I have created a new social movement. people's lives. I have created a new social movement, for example, for fertility fraud, demonstrating that we can move past conversations into action. Since 2019, I passed 11 state laws that have helped people attain accountability against criminal perpetrators that they could not have under their prior legal systems. When you start having the conversations that matter, people start being able to do things. I won't just stop with the connections with residents. I will make those connections matter.
Thank you. Steve?
Commissioner, cite there, personal outreach. I mean, that's good. I suppose you want somebody who's empathetic in office. But they don't talk about how they intentionally excluded Bloomington police from the CJRC. They intentionally did not want Bloomington to take part in this important discussion about the entire justice system, even though BPD is a huge and important user of the system. They talk about the little things. They don't talk about the big things that matter. Everyone's doing solar panels. That's the baseline in 2024. You'd be remiss if you weren't doing it. They tend to listen to the neighbors who speak up, the loud ones, the ones who are malcontents. They don't necessarily go to listen to the neighbors who don't come to meetings, who don't have time to come to meetings. Jody's right about that 10:00 AM meeting. The city council always meets after 5:30 PM so that people who are working maybe can, can attend. How is this not something that the commissioners are doing in 2024? Why do they still have ARPA money? Why are they sitting, it should have been spent by now. It was meant to be emergency money. Why are they hoarding it? How come they weren't helping people before now? Costs have gone up. On all the big things that matter, they've been remiss, but they keep focusing on the, on the little stuff. They talk, they talk to people, and therefore, they're good people. Of course, they're good people, but that doesn't make them good leaders.
Thank you. Peter?
So I'm told by my daughters that I have a problem, that I'm an incurable extrovert, that wherever we go, people are always stopping me, and I always get in trouble with my kids for having too long a conversations. That doesn't make me a great public servant, but I think it's important. Number one, I think that I'm the only candidate up here that has had listening sessions and online forums in off-election years on important topics such as gun violence and access to healthcare for women. I also feel very strongly that once I'm a part of the Board of Commissioners, not only is the time an issue, but also if you've ever been to a Board of Commissioners meeting, you'll notice that the work session generally doesn't have the items to be discussed listed. It's a mystery. You don't know what you're going to be talking about. I think that needs to change. I think the public wants to know. The second thing that I think is really important is that I have really good working relationships with city council members and Mayor Thompson. This is really important to move the topics that you care about forward. We need to be working together. Some other issues that I think can really help in terms of residence connection is ensuring that we're up to date with our technology, that we are going to people with that technology instead of waiting for them to come to us. That doesn't work. And the last thing I'll mention is it's time to bring back Monroe County Day. It's time to bring back a report to you what we've been doing in county government and offering you opportunities to get involved.
Did we start with Julie?
Yeah.
Okay.
You did. That's why I'm silent. That's why I'm silent.
It's Penny's turn, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So starting with Penny, and this is, two audience members asked this. How important is it to listen to people who challenge your views and give an example of how you've done this?
Well, I've been married to the same guy for 45 years. Does that count? My goodness. Yeah. I've gone into some of the rezone requests that we've had with one opinion based upon things I read, and I come out of it with a different feeling because I've listened to the people who come and talk to us. And that's not always necessarily the people who are against the rezone. It's been also people who are for the rezone as, as things have, have occurred. So I do do that. I'm also, because of my background in training in science, I do believe in evidence-based kind of programming and research and making sure that I do my due diligence on things. That's one of the things I'm known for, is to try to do my homework at every step of the way so that, that I am informed. If you have legitimate challenges to that, I'm more than willing to listen. I've had to learn a lot, not only during my time as a commissioner, but as many of you know, I have a, I have a son with autism. I didn't go into parenthood thinking that I was going to have a special needs child. It's caused me to have to work with a lot of different people, and I've done that also by helping other families. So I, I would prefer actually to sit here and listen to you all and what your concerns are today than to be up in front of you, quite frankly.
This is something I try to do every single day in my job as a law professor. The success that I have as a teacher depends upon my ability to bring together voices that are diverse culturally, ideologically, and now, unfortunately, in Indiana University while avoiding bias incident reports that are all too frequent. So it's not only important to listen to people who challenge your views, it's important to seek out these voices. I have to defend my positions when I go to academic conferences, when I try to publish. Everything I do is subject to criticism, from my teaching to my research, and that makes me a stronger and a better person when I listen and I improve. In addition, when I build in these diverse voices, it helps to bring in different voices that are important to decision-making. And I think that is something that is not being done enough on the county council. I think we need people who, again, seek out those difficult, challenging voices instead of shutting down groups like the Criminal Justice Response Commission and CJRC. And again, we need to demonstrate our collaborative spirit and seek out those diverse voices even when they challenge us, especially because they challenge us.
I sort of come at it from the opposite point of view. I've dealt for 20 years with a council that likes to talk forever, and I was by no means the only person contributing to that. Some of you may remember a meeting that lasted nine hours. That's because we had six hours of public comment on the homelessness ordinance. We did not need to hear from everybody who wanted to speak. We could have broken it up into more meetings. And so that's why immediately after that fiasco, I authored the reasonable hour ordinance that allowed any two members of council to shut down a meeting if it was after midnight. That still sounds unreasonable, five and a half hours, and yet, that's the standard we were working with. That's partly because there are some people who are frequent flyers. They come to every meeting. They speak all the time. And if you are not paying attention, you might think that this is how everybody in the public feels. But in fact, that's not the case. Most people don't speak up. Most people don't come to meetings. You have to go and solicit them. You know, you also have to be able to work with people. And the intransigence shown by the commissioners against the mayor was so extreme that they didn't know how to work with the city. But I mean, they can get in line behind me because I had to fight the mayor, and I was able to work with the mayor. I got things passed, and I also, for example, I'm the only person who voted against the monolith five years ago, the only person. Five years later, my suspicion about the vagueness of the gateways bond was vindicated. But on the other hand, I was able to, just Commissioner Githens is not the only person who had to lead through the pandemic. I was president in 2020 of the council, and the mayor and I helped keep the city running.
Thank you for asking this question. I think this is a really important distinction in this race. Listening to challenging views is a part of the job that we need to be doing regularly, and it's something that we need to go out and seek. It's not something that we need to, as Board of Commissioners, wait to come to us. I'm going to give you some examples of the way that I've done that. First, I sat on the CJRC. I was there. You can go back through the CATS recordings and see how tumultuous it was and how difficult it was. And I think the highlight for me was when I invited one of the city council members to come forward and provide public comments. One of the Board of Commissioners got up and walked out, absolutely aghast that a member of the city council would be invited to come forward and speak. I think it's important to be able to listen to those voices. Another example is when I created the Justice Fiscal Advisory Commission. We made sure that people who had lived experience were telling us their truths, and that was really hard to hear. It's really hard to hear about someone's substance use disorder and the ways that the, the current county government is really impeding them towards treatment. And the last part I'll mention is when we were in, when I was doing the Justice Fiscal Advisory Commission, we set aside two days, one to talk all about treatment, and the second to talk all about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those are really uncomfortable conversations, but we had them. We sought out individuals to give testimony, and we did that work. And that's why I'm asking for your vote.
I agree that this is a great question because one of the things we did when we first started looking at new jail facility is we utilized the great folks at Community Justice and Mediation. I'm a trained mediator, by the way, by them. And we utilized them to have community conversations out throughout the county, throughout the county, to hear from people who had been directly impacted by the criminal justice system. And that was, there were, these are difficult things to hear, but we had to hear them. And those kinds of things are informational and informing and touching and moving, and they will change the way you look at things. I was probably the last person to say we couldn't remodel the current jail and we had to build a new one. But it's because I listened, and one of my, one of the things I live by is if I'm not uncomfortable, I'm not, my ears are not open. And so I do embrace hearing a lot of voices, and we do need to ensure that we hear from folks who are underrepresented in our community, not just the loudest voices in the room. And that's why I've been working with the Monroe County Health Equity Council on that theory thing. And I'm actually part of the steering committee and part of the group called Government Relations. And we're working on bridging that gap between the people and the policymakers and making sure that every voice is heard. And if we could hear from every single person on every single item, I would love that, but we cannot sadly do that.
Thank you. This next question will be for Jody.
This is a good, this is a good segue. So we talked about, or several people talked about that it is important to bring BIPOC and other marginalized voices into the decision-making process. So how would you do that?
I think there are several ways. Again, I think I answered quite a bit of this question earlier, and so I'll keep my remarks more brief here. I believe in bringing diverse voices into the room. I don't believe in canceling people who challenge me. I believe in seeking out people who challenge me. And again, I've done that in the gun violence prevention context by seeking out people both who have been victims of gun crimes, many of whom are from communities of color, minoritized communities, but also from gun owners. And I've gotten them in the same room and had community conversations. It's a difficult thing. We've got to do it. One of the things I would do that's very palpable and present in Monroe County, there's a lot of racial tensions. There's a lot of elected officials who don't feel that they've received the respect that they deserve, quite frankly, that they don't, are, and are not regarded as co-equal branches of government. We need to get people in the same room. We need to get past these conversations, and we need to have a full and frank conversation about race in this community yesterday.
We've been having that conversation in the city for a number of years now. Some of you may remember the Bearcat incident of 2018. The city council chamber was filled within a couple of days with an emergency meeting that the council called just to listen to the anger at people, that people were expressing about the, the police department's acquisition of a, an armored vehicle. I had to go do an entire day's worth of digging to figure out how it slipped past the city council. It turns out that we had, we needed a law on the books that would prevent transfers of money. The money had been approved for something else, for building a garage, and the estimates came in too high. And so the police just said, well, we need one of these. Let's do that. So the council passed a law preventing transfers, interdepartment transfers of more than $100,000 without council approval. In 2020, we found ourselves in the same situation, and I was one of four members of a committee that went looking for the right vendor to provide diversity, equity, inclusion training in the community. But I mean, it starts with listening in the first place. I mean, we already are, have, we can use more, I mean, we don't have enough commissions in the city. I'm not sure how many there are in the county, but I'm pretty sure there are fewer status of commissions than there are in the city. We have already joined the human rights commissions together. That's a good first step. But I think that the bottom line is Bloomington is a metropolitan area, and we need to cooperate with the county in forming commissions that, that we don't have to repeat or make redundant services.
This is a great question, and thank you for asking it. The Recorder's Office recently published a report showing the discriminatory covenants in many of our older neighborhoods. And we know now that housing continues to be an issue where we need to make sure there's equity across the board. One of the things that I continue to be worried about, and I've listed this on my website, peteriverson.org, it's under the Issues tab, is I was a fan, and I voted for bringing the garden into Monroe County to do anti-bias training, to do cultural competency training. And the way that training happened was they did a pre-post event where they asked a series of questions. They did a training, and then they asked a series of questions afterwards to see how attitudes might have shifted. And folks, it was scary. It's really scary to read those reports, to see how attitudes have not shifted. That just belied the surface of many folks. There, there does belie discrimination and, and really some scary things. That's why on my website, I call for Monroe County to again approach folks in the community who are capable and able to do an anti-racism training in Monroe County so that we can lay the groundwork for basic awareness of how we are not meeting the bar in Monroe County. The second thing that we can do based upon that report is to build upon that to ensure that we're being equitable in our policies, and that's anti-racism.
And there is a Bloomington Coalition's Building Better Communities Coalition in our area, and it's connected with, in many ways, with our Youth Service Bureau. And one of the things that I think about, too, is yes, we brought the training to Monroe County employees, and we made it mandatory. We utilized a local black woman-led company, and really proud of that. And she did an amazing job. And we are going to talk to her again about what's next, even though we do have other training modules in place relating to respect in the workplace and diversity in the workplace and communications that are respectful in the workplace. Intersectionality is a big thing that, as somebody who taught in gender studies for years, is one of the big things that I talk about. And that means that we have to think about all of the ways that people's identity impacts the way they're treated in the community and make sure that voices are heard. We need to have diverse voices on our boards and commissions, and that's one of the things we always aspire to do. And we need to think about this, especially as we look at our jail programming, and we need to think about gender identity and what it tells us about the jail and how we treat people. And we need to think about it in terms of mental health and substance use disorder connected with poverty and connected with bias. And we need to put those pieces together every single day. It is not one training away. It is an ongoing process.
Well, one of the things that the, as a county commissioner, that, that is, we're responsible for, is that we're responsible for signing every single contract, basically, for the county. And every single one of those has non-discriminatory sections written into those. The, the stuff that we read can be very detailed. There are times when you want to say, oh, I'm tired. I can just skip this. But I don't. I make sure that those things are put in there every week. There was one week when our, just our pocket alone had, I think it was 485 pages, and I read those to make sure that, that we got to that point. But I think beyond BIPOC, one of the things that we don't talk about is including people with disabilities in what we do. And that's been part of my life now for 34 years. So much of my life that, over 20 years ago, I worked with people at the YMCA to create a, an adaptive martial arts program for people with special needs. We had volunteers. In fact, Neil Guo-Swamy, who's sitting here in the audience, was one of those volunteers for several years. I started taking martial arts so I could be one of the volunteers there as well. And that was always completely diverse, too, when it came to race, when it came to gender identity, any of those things. But we do not do enough to bring in our disabled community into what we're doing, and I intend to work on that even more as I go forward.
Thank you. We're going to change, switch gears a little bit, starting with Steve. Do you plan, did I do that to you last time?
I don't know. I'm going to roll with it.
All right. I like it. Do you plan to propose changes in taxes? And if so, what changes?
Do I plan to propose changes in taxes? I'm not sure that, as a county commissioner, it's going to be in my hands. The, the thing that people who are fighting annexation should remember is that the city of Bloomington has the majority on the local income tax council. So the city can pass-
council. So the city can pass and has passed taxes unilaterally, and it raised taxes for people in the county as well. I think it would behoove the county to have something more of a relationship with the city on taxes than just, we're against everything you're doing. So, I mean, I think that, I expect the city to be looking at the remainder of the local income tax to raise it. Again, it will force the taxes to go up in the county because you can't, the city, the state doesn't allow the city to just raise taxes on its own. It's a countywide thing. And again, because they have the majority on the local income tax council, that's their prerogative uniquely. So I've been on, on that end of the tax raising question. I don't think that, if anything, I would more, be more planning on what the county would do with money when we inevitably find ourselves facing a tax increase again, if the city chooses to do that. So I don't know if that answers the full question.
You answered it the way you wanted to answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Steve writes, I'm the only person on this dais today, on this stage, that has the authority to deal with tax issues because I currently serve you on the Monroe County Council. Should I be successful to join the Board of Commissioners, I would maintain the policy that I've had so far, is that increases in taxes would be an additional hardship on a community that's already struggling. And again, keep in mind, I'm out there talking to regular folks multiple times, every single week, knocking on their doors and asking them about what topics are important to them. What are they passionate about? What are they worried about? What are they losing sleep over? And you know, I keep hearing the same things over and over again. Peter, I just, I've, I've got a kid who's got a substance use disorder, and I don't know what to do with them. I'm scared for them, and we need better treatment options. Or Peter, my kid just graduated from college, and there's no jobs here, and I want them to be close. Why can't we bring more jobs in? I tell them about the economic development efforts that we're doing with BEDC to bring in enhanced, for, you know, these, these market ship technologies. And we're bringing in these jobs that are really well-paying, but we need to be doing more. And that's exactly what we can be doing on the Board of Commissioners. And folks, the other thing that people are talking to me about is housing. They want their grandkids to live close to them so they can care for them, but there's just not enough housing. We can change that.
I served on the Monroe County Council, starting in 2009. I served a term there. And so I, I've learned a lot about county budgets and county departments and how they work. And I brought that experience with me to the Board of Commissioners in 2013 when I started. No, the commissioners do not, do not have a hand in the finances. The fiscal body of the council, of the county, is the county council. But that doesn't mean that we can't do things to help leverage your tax dollars to serve the whole community better. So we are talking with the Redevelopment Commission of Monroe County about a housing tax increment finance district, which would not impact taxpayers individually, but what it would do is provide affordable, truly affordable housing, something that meets the federal requirements for housing. I don't know that I would brag about taxation without representation, because if the city council is taxing the entire county, how do people who live outside the city vote on those representatives who have raised their taxes? That, that always worries me a bit. And it's something that is raised often in the legislature, and hopefully they will address that. But we certainly do have to deal with fiscal issues all the time. And that's one of the things I'm working on with transit. We have, we are still in the process, and hopefully next week it will be resolved, to ensure that transit is provided to folks outside the areas, outside the city of Bloomington, but provided by rural transit in the more densely populated areas, especially Ellisville. And I'm working on that.
As others have said, county commissioners have no say on changes in taxes and what those might look like. But I would like to talk about how we have used some of the tax money to benefit residents. When COVID first hit, we were really scared about what was going to happen to small businesses and maintaining those small businesses. We have a lot of small businesses that are engaged in things that are related to tourism. For example, as during that time, I've learned that about half of the weddings that occur in Monroe County are IU, former IU students who come back here to get married. That brings in millions and millions of dollars into our county. And so we use some of the food and beverage tax money that the county controls to give out grants, not loans, but grants to places like wedding venues, caterers, florists, dog walkers, imagine that, dog walkers who, who service people who are out at, at Lake Monroe for weddings and things like that, to make sure that those businesses emerged from, from COVID. We also took some of our cares dollars to make sure that other businesses had the kinds of support they needed, whether it was air filtration, or masks, or cleaning supplies. But again, to keep those things going. We fought annexation because of increased property taxes, and we provided tax abatement to enhance, to bring in really well-paying jobs into this community, average of $100,000 each, and with the view to bring in a lot more. So thank you.
I've always wanted to say this on a stage, mark my words, no new taxes, right? Those of us of a certain generation can, can appreciate that. And then we say LOL instead of texting it. So taxes are very high here. We all know that. We should not, cannot overtax community residents. When and if we have a new tax, we need to explain this to residents. We need to have public conversations. But as an academic, I actually do things, unlike, not just a resident of the Ivy, Avery Tower. We, I like to seek alternatives to tax increases, such as grants, and I'm really good at creative funding. But when we tax, we also have responsibility to use the public funds, and we use, and we have to have a conversation about how to use them in a timely manner. So let's talk about the convention center and the food and beverage tax. It took so long to move on this tax that the General Assembly passed the bill in 2023, using the local food and beverage tax as a prod. To acquire Bloomington and Monroe County to show progress, they had to develop a plan to spend that by December 1st, 2023, and file the plans with the state. So not a great record of using the tax dollars in a timely fashion. Also, see ARPA funds.
Thank you very much. This next question is a yes or no question. And so we don't need a time. It is a yes or no question. Peter, okay, we'll start. Will you change the 10:00 AM meeting time to make attendance by the public easier?
I would add more.
Yes or no question.
Maybe. How about maybe? Let's, let's talk about it some more. That's all I could say. Let's talk about it some more.
Penny.
I would like to have switch-up meetings.
Yes.
How about absolutely?
That wasn't an option, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Starting with Julie, how could the state legislature make the job of a commissioner easier?
Oh, wow. Wow. Do I have an hour? Okay, so I would say that one of the things they could do is they could stop interfering with things that are local. Local rules should prevail. You have local leaders that you elect to manage planning and zoning, to manage infrastructure, to manage stormwater, to manage floodways, to manage every aspect of county government. Please do not decide those kinds of things for us. Let us decide locally. It's actually a very conservative perspective to think about it that way. Home rule, important. I would also say that they continually give us unfunded mandates, things we have to do, that they do not fund, but yet we have to do them. And that is always a ridiculous thing for residents because you all have to pay the tax to pay for us to manage their processes. So I think they could do something to protect women's reproductive rights instead of shaming women. I think they could do something to control weapons and guns in our community. There are some things that they need to be doing. They could allow us, for example, to set a living wage locally, based on our county. Our cost of living is different than Boone County. Okay? That's just the way it is. We got college students. It's different. So let us set a living wage here to ensure that people can afford housing. Thank you.
Well, definitely the state legislature makes our, our jobs more, more difficult. This last session, well, actually last year, when they were talking about the food and beverage tax, with less than 12 hours' notice, I was up in the state legislature testifying to make sure that it did not, the bill did not go into effect last year, and I was successful, hopefully, with that. I view this as, my job as a commissioner is a full-time job, and I can do those things like drive up to the legislature on 12 hours' notice or less to testify with things. This past year, I went up, this past session, this year, I was up two different times because they changed the 15% slope requirement in Monroe County. That slope requirement was put into effect at the recommendation of our planning department and in conjunction with what IDAM recommends, that there not be anything larger than 18, 15% slope. And that was done because of the unique soils that we have here in Monroe County. They overrode us. They overrode our trained planning department. They overrode our trained stormwater people. And that's because they thought that they knew better than what local people did about our local situation. We don't have an ability to put into effect a local minimum wage. They took away our right to do things like limit the use of, of single-use plastic bags, because again, they think they know better than we do in Monroe County about what we want and how we want to live.
I think my colleagues here on stage have said it loudly and eloquently. The state legislature could make our lives better by just stop trying to take control of local decisions. That makes everyone's job harder. And it's my job too, because I have a career as a public advocate, a very, very, very robust career. So Indiana is a home rule state. I just got done talking to the legislature yet again about how they're taking home rule away from political subdivisions. So each spring, I blaze a path to the State House to testify against bad gun bills. This year, I worked closely with the Brady Center to oppose a bill that would end a 24-year-old lawsuit that Gary, Indiana, had brought against gun, gun manufacturers and retailers to stop illegal gun trafficking. I lost, but I fought the fight for local rights, and I'm going to keep fighting the fight for local rights. In fact, that's one reason I'm running. But we also need to make decisions and take action on a local level that is, that are effective, or else the state is going to act. And we need a strong government whence the state does try to come in and make incursions into our territory as a local political subdivision.
You're not going to find a lot of disagreement on this question. We're all Democrats. This is the Democratic primary, and the State House is run by Republicans, and we know what era we're living in. As Julie said, home rule is being eroded steadily. And sometimes they just sort of like to dunk on the libs because we're the blue county in this otherwise red state. But a few things that they could do is, you know, if a city's going to do an annexation, let the city council vet it before interrupting the process unconstitutionally. They don't know how much we might have cut out of it if we had just had the chance. We were barely getting a chance to do that in 2017. Let the city tax itself without involving the county. Let it be separated. If the city wants to raise the local income tax, fine, but don't make it a county-wide thing so that the county is required to do it when the city is the majority of the population in the county. Let us better control housing, especially if you put the state's premier institution of higher education in this county, and then you don't give it an enrollment cap. It's always going to grow. There is no enrollment cliff. This is the school everyone's going to want to come to. Smaller schools will close before IU ever drops. The demand for housing will always grow. Either the state should put a cap on the university, or they should let us better control housing. Although the slopes issue, I will just say briefly, if the commissioners had been building more and denser housing all along, maybe Dave Hall wouldn't have had the excuse to say, well, so we can get more housing built in the county. But in, in any case, I think we're all in agreement on this topic.
Thank you for this question. I have four answers, but we obviously could talk about this for a long time. Number one is abortion. My nine-year-old and six-year-old have fewer rights over their own bodies than their mother did at their age. That's scary. There is no reason why I want my daughters being raised in a state where they are, they don't have control over their own bodies. It's really scary. And now we have to worry about IVF. And now we have to worry about whether or not, if they choose to go on birth control, whether that's going to be available to them. This is scary stuff. The state could do a lot to reassure the women in this state that, that, I don't know, I don't, it's scary. And, and I mean, we're talking about this with our nine-year-old and six-year-old. We're, I mean, we're not going into details, but man, it's scary. It's scary. The, the second issue is regional treatment centers. Representative Stewart Wald has a bill where there was going to be a series of treatment centers. It wasn't funded. They need to be funded. Our jails are not treatment centers. Get people out of jails and into treatment centers. The third is protect our drinking water and leave our wetlands alone. I mean, Bean Blossom Bottoms is beautiful. Don't touch that. And the fourth issue is gun safety in schools. We send our kids on the bus every single morning, and it's scary. They go through drills where they have to hide. This is kindergarten and third grade. Stop the gun violence. That's what the state can do.
Thank you very much. All right. In essence of time, we're going to go ahead and go to our one-minute closing remarks. And we will go in the same order as we did the opening remarks, starting with Peter.
Folks, I hope today has been illuminating for you. I think that the race between these two people is very, very clear. One is stagnation. In 2021, there were three opportunities to build homes. It was unanimously rejected. I've got a plan for the future of our county, and that choice is really clear. I don't think it's hyperbole to say that your vote, whether you vote early or vote on the 7th, is going to chart the future of our community for decades to come. You know what's being offered right now in the Board of Commissioners. And if you vote to keep with that stagnation, that's okay. But if you want to change, if you want homes for people to live close to their families, jobs where they can afford life in this community and all the amenities that we offer, if you want protection against climate change, there's a way forward. My name's Peter Iverson, and I am asking for your vote this, this May.
Thank you.
Julie?
All right. I do appreciate everyone being here. Ms. Douglas, thank you for being such a marvelous moderator. I am tested, trusted, and I have demonstrated my commitment to Monroe County residents. We thrive on innovation. We thrive on listening and engaging with residents. That's how we get the direction for all of the work that we do and all of the projects we pursue and all of the ways that we serve this community. I am running on my record. I have worked hard for the people of Monroe County every day, and I'm proud of the hard work, and I'm proud of my record. Please contact me through thomasformonroecounty.org. And I do want to make some notes about things that are going on right now. One is transit. We are working with on-transit, especially regarding the jail. We have to do that. We, the convention center is done. New administration, turn the page. So things are moving forward, and they move forward every day. But we are diligent, hard workers who listen and collaborate, and that's how we succeed every day. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, and thank you all for being with us today. While we are all Democrats, I am different from my opponents. I, for one, opposed annexation. I have never accepted support money from the Federalist Society, nor do I treat this as a part-time job. While I've been criticized for not supporting some of the rezones that developers have brought before the Board of Commissioners, I've supported housing developments like Osage Place, the expansion of Fieldstone, a new Habitat neighborhood on Old State Route 37, and more. I was the one that went back to people and said, we have to get this convention center done. And I worked with my city and county colleagues to get that done. I've been an advocate for special needs people for over 30 years, and I bring that same attitude to my role as a county commissioner. I continue to advocate for others, from feeding those in need, to helping residents stay in their homes, to expanding programming options in our jail, to increasing childcare options, and expanding harm reduction efforts. I'm Penny Githens. I'm running for reelection because I care, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Jody?
Thanks so much for the chance to share my experiences today. I'm the only one at this table who has not served in Monroe County government. But the experience doesn't mean much if you don't use it to get stuff done. I believe in collaboration, expertise, mutual respect, evidence-based decision-making, and bringing diverse voices to the table. And speaking about bringing diverse voices to the table, I'm really glad that Penny brought up the Federalist Society funding. up the Federalist Society funding, because I persuaded the Federalist Society, which is a conservative grant-making organization, puts a lot of pressure on, for example, liberal justice types to get things going, get people in judgeships, et cetera. The Federalist Society is very conservative. I brought them to the table, and you know what they funded? A project on IVF and embryos, and how women should have the right to decide what happens in their body, and their autonomy should be respected. That's what the Federalist Society funded. And we see, of course, what the conservative stance towards embryos is today. So I stand for change. I want to listen, and I want to lead. Thank you.
I'm the only person who hasn't said I'm the only person who has. Just kidding. On this stage. I served this city for 20 years, trying to make it a more affordable and sustainable place to live for everyone. I have effective and longstanding relationships with officials elected and appointed, even with the former mayor. I fought him when it was necessary, agreed with him when it was right. I want improvements to the city with his help and without it. You're hearing two different stories today about the performance of the current commissioners. I learned the hard way that they're interested, when it comes to land use, in helping only non-city residents and certain vocal homeowners who are driven by irrational and unfounded fears of change. Whether it's their terrible opposition to any new housing, their terrible performance on solving the jail crisis, or their terrible approach to diplomacy with other offices, the commissioners' out-of-touch approach to governance has failed. Monroe County needs new leadership. I'll act to make housing more affordable. I'll act to end the jail crisis quickly. I'll act to restore tact and diplomacy to the commissioners. Vote for a change in county leadership on May 7th. Thank you. I urge you to act.
Before we thank our candidates, I do have, again, some housekeeping issues that I want to announce to you. On behalf of all of our forum supporters, and even not of some of the supporters, remember to vote. The last day actually to register is actually April 8th.
No.
No. April 9th. Oh, the day. To register?
The voter registration office will be closed.
Oh, because they're going to close. Okay.
April 9th at noon.
April 9th at noon. Okay. And you can visit the website, vote411.org, to view an online voter guide that includes all the candidates' written responses to questions. And again, that website is vote411.org. And the Democrats seeking the U.S. House District 9 seat will participate in a Zoom candidate forum on Saturday, April 6th. And to register for the Zoom, please visit lwvbmcc.org. And again, like we said, Election Day is Tuesday, and voting begins, or, May 7th, and voting begins Tuesday, April 9th, for early voting. So let's give our candidates all a round of applause. We know what Thomas Jefferson says about getting in the arena. Thank you so much, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Maria.